Alright, so I'll open the meeting at six o'clock and we'll begin the plan of the week. Alright, so we have adjustment to the agenda. We are going to add Jake Williamson under new business. Discuss splitting a lot split. Um, is anybody here speaking on agenda, no? Nope, okay. The due meeting minutes, May eleventh. Any motion to accept that meeting? Any discussion on paper? Alright, meeting minutes for May twenty-seventh.
I make a motion itself in the unit, May twenty-seventh.
One second. Any discussion on paper? And then lastly, the meeting minutes for June thirty.
Make a motion to accept the June third, two thousand twenty.
Um, right. The only adjustment I could see, it says five zero, there wasn't five zero. There's four, there was four of us.
How many, which one?
Um, on the, Jim Ferris, yeah. So, except with those two, Jake. Alright, all those in favor?
The property went through.
Yeah, I have filed my agenda to do that. Uh, Jake wasn't here, was he?
Yeah.
He came to that.
Strong in ten.
He came to that.
I guess he didn't come though.
He came to that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, aren't they?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's your head.
Yeah.
We haven't seen him for a while.
Can you stop recording this? I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Alright, so good as well.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so we have a correspondence letter from Rose Holland. Um, if you guys wanna take that over. In support of the, um, the, uh, bruises. So that's already voted on, so. Okay, so on to new business, application for subdivision approval. Um, Mr. Orgo. Um, you guys, I don't think we need the, you go past the building permit and the documents, and then put some applications for subdivision approval. Do you think so last? Thank you. So, correct me if I'm wrong. You guys look, there's the two properties. And, um, they want to combine that into one lot. And look at building that storage shed. Right now, the garage is already built and it's sitting on.
Two lots.
Yeah, and they've all lost, right? Yes. So what they're looking at is would be an adjustment to the, um, the subdivision. Looking over the code for the subdivision. I don't think we will probably do anything like that. Just go on tonight.
One time we had something like this, and we, uh, was probably.
Because it was affecting two different subdivisions.
That's, but I wouldn't see it obviously possible to do that, so. But I don't have any issues, there's, they own both lots, one, your garage is already straddling the property line.
You would like that.
Yeah, why not? Yeah. Well, I hope so.
Yeah, the one we just saw, they were actually moving one from a separate subdivision into another subdivision. Here, yeah.
Yeah.
So, do you guys have numbers for this?
No, there's not, application will complete and everything, so. I make a motion that's accepted by Chris New York, who's pointing to the point where, uh, application to two bodies, two lots, and two women. I'll start with that.
Any discussion? Yeah, we can absolutely do that. Would be. It's listed on the agenda. Um, six, map, six. Map eleven, lots point forty-nine, four, and five, so lots four and five.
That's the best one, Marshall. Six zero zero one, lots zero two, there are four, I think, so.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Alright, so, keep, correct me if I'm wrong, we touched a discussion on this, so now. Um, you guys have, you have one verse to sign. About four, I don't know, okay. Well, yes, so you only take four copies to the registry, for them to, um, do a booking page. And then you bring copies back to us, you keep a copy, the court will keep a copy, the accessory will keep a copy. And then the flame board keeps a copy through the court of law. So, okay, so can you share this name, or yes, you would like to sign it, like, in a black pen? Is that right, did I say that?
You want me to tell you, because it's, yeah.
Yes, I'll just say the board now.
Out of students. And, uh, trying to, or what, probably. I guess they goes. I dig over. I look at the papers.
Right, this is the board you mentioned, they might have made, they have to, uh, for the bigger fee, but it's two hundred dollars on. That they pay, and they get that back when we receive those four copies back.
Okay. That's part of it, too.
Oh, it's part of it, oh. I said, will this sign? Uh, I don't know how much it is to file these. I know, like, when we do names of stuff, it's nineteen dollars a day, but I don't know what it is to, you know, for some type of, yeah. What is that? Um, you know what, the new, the old warehouses, and having kind of red, not one year. Um, you've really got a Harman today, so on your left, if you're going down into Harman today, for you, hit the first light in Harman today. Okay, um, make sure you hit the first light, on your left is a red corner. The big, the, right.
One has up to this.
It's inside there.
Seven, seven, five, two, three. Four, oh, this is Carol. Yeah, all the way over to nine one, right, yeah.
Do you want to try that?
One of my, one of my shows, I think, is the longest.
So you guys have thirty days to do this back. I get it back to the town.
Next up.
Yes. Hey, uh, something.
Why do people in town want to vote?
Alright, here you go. You're very welcome, right, so what is this?
It means how long does it take for us to meet that? I don't know the proof, and before that.
Alright, thank you, there's something I got, alright.
Yeah.
Oh, can you just have an original? Okay. Um, so, we'll just go ahead and get Kate's next question. Um, Kate, would you like to explain much, or I, um, didn't know that was coming today, so I wouldn't, we would have gotten stuff, I've had time, they do have a, this real fire law. Alright, every one.
So I own, um, our family owns two lots that are in the gingerbread property downtown commercial zone. And it's. And it's, um. It's in a water, yeah, so we have four hundred feet of frontage on the Ranger River. And then it goes all the way to Route four in downtown. So the two hundred fifty feet for the major river is a, 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 a zone.
Which, which one are we looking at? I should have just read, you said it's all right back.
I own both. So I didn't own these lots.
Okay.
Interesting, so anything from here all the way.
Okay.
Okay, so what we wanted to do is divide some self property into two brands. And then a, a different lot, a wooden lot here. So I want to see, we filled out, we filled out on this, this is a different map number than this. This is the original thing that I bought, and I want all of these lots, and we need a lot of that. Okay, so, um, we own this too. So what you're asking is, we do have a, I've been working with the county for the last three or four years, to try to get a, a, as a, as a, as a lot, ability. Um, in resource protection, moving the resource protection diagram there. And, um, I have not been able to get a definitive answer. Um, until recently, and the, the recent answer was, the minute I divide new lot. So I would divide everything, to all the resource protection pieces.
So this is the one you're talking about separating, right?
No. Or this, this, in here, so I'm gonna not create a backlot, and it's a little faster. I'm gonna build this lot, then I'm going to, so it won't be a backlot, so we don't consider it. And then I would sell this, 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 that, from the river.
Alright.
Okay, so by that time, I would have shown you that every house on Ranger River, on my side of the river, is within ten, twenty feet of the river. So every lot on that river is, grandfathered, obviously, but they were built before me, and they are five fifty, twenty five B, they're right by the river. Even the, um, uh, fish hatchery is right on the river. On the other side, these are undeveloped, so that's the first step. So, um, my lot is the old undeveloped lot. And I want to comply with those new resource protection, but I won't be able to build in the future. So I can comply with every rule of resource protection, but the minute I divide that piece off, I'm creating a new deed, which then makes me not pay a profit. Even though it does. That's my map. Alright, so, so I have an exception in case this case, this particle, based on my, uh, butters, and, uh, brothers are losing, I don't get it. No, yeah. And if you Google that, it, you would see that there's, and how is it, it's from, like, here. Yeah, that's, yeah. And how, and we're talking about those, yeah, hundreds, hundreds of, yeah. Which is the resource protection guideline. So, since, since, uh, the natural, we had the, uh, staff look at it, the sewers don't work, the ground looks good, kind of foot, um. Okay, the building diagrams are fine, you know, if somebody came with those, um, building comments, it would have to be, obviously, with, built by you. They'll be a thousand feet, you know, can't be too high, and all those connections, that, et cetera, et cetera. So we want to comply with every single thing, the only thing that can not comply with is I can't sell the entire lot, which is like six, five acres of land, that's all my gingerbread property is on.
I don't, this, pretty.
So, this is my selling, that's my backlot. Back in time, that's my door, there's no, which is on those lots, lots. Okay.
You want specifically to break off this right here?
Yeah, but not all of it, that would just, it would go back to that line.
How would they have access to your property?
They would have access to the, they could put a road grant, and would go to here, now.
So beyond the sacrifice church, like, that would be.
I own the church, I own the, the church.
Wow, okay.
So this whole part, I want the church to come in mind.
Okay.
So they would get the road access, go to here, and I would give them fifty feet, and they go right away to the church party.
Yeah.
Um, the only other, the backlot question is, um, is, the downtown commercial zone does not require any foot experts to create a backlot, it's not in the code. So ID fifty feet is enough. The, if a backlot, that would reduce to like a hundred feet, which is what is in commercial zone. Then I would comply, because the session on a hundred feet of road rush, I would narrow it back, just to give them that road access in. But then they would be building within the two hundred fifty feet zone. So they would be building a hundred feet, hundred feet back from the river, um, but not two hundred fifty feet back. Two hundred fifty feet back, then I'd not. That's the problem. So I can't, so I do have a, a driver.
Alright, so, uh, we have.
Just, just, a question, a, a question for me, in that year, not, not affiliated with the book. That is definitely on Route four, for state highway, is there a, state recognition for state, and makes, uh, that, 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 that.
The only thing Tom and I have, so, now Tom, he talked me, he just told me, for an officer, never gave me any official answers at all. Um, and I did talk to our lawyer, just to see, because there is a question between whether it has to be a hundred feet of road frontage, or, well, they, they said it could be big block, because there's no code in the downtown commercial, and I'm in downtown. But, um, yeah, so, um, I don't think Route four should have any issue on it, because I'm downtown here, so nobody ever mentioned the state highway, because I think with, same, same property. It's downtown commercial, it's, 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 yeah. Um, but to create a backlot, if I pass through a hundred feet, I would. Um, I don't believe I do, if I'm a hardware. I don't, I don't need a, an, a car, but we were planning on giving them fifty.
Alright. So my thoughts on this is, probably, um, MMA legal, and find out, because, thing is, is like you said, once it separates out, it's tougher.
Exactly.
So, um, did they really come out, and, and what they, um, and go from there? Honestly, I don't know, so.
Do you ever, do you ever make changes to the sessions, the, the code, or is that?
Um, in shoreline, we do, um, it's, if you have no, like, you don't have to be so many feet back on the shoreline, but if you have no other options, then you can do that.
Right.
That's, you know.
That's what resource protection would say as well.
Yeah.
I knew, my, the only problem, because the, the lot wasn't late, obviously, but, um, the minute I made a small piece of that lot.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that lot, yeah.
So, we will get something together, you guys want my, um, so, you guys okay if I come back and I.
If everything's spoken to yours.
I think also, if you just, like, you to the help, MMA, legal, you know, that as far as, I know, it's new resource protection, that every single property on Ranger River, on my side of the river, is, um, already built. This is the only empty lot on this, that the other lots, like the rivers, is two feet.
Yeah.
No, no, not to that.
But can you do me a favor? Can you put something together tomorrow, explaining exactly?
Yes.
You don't, you don't, yeah, just explain exactly what you're looking for, and then we'll go back, and I'll send over the copies, and fast back, and, and. No, yeah, and I don't see any reason why, that you have a number, that you're, that you're max needed.
Hey, but that's a very difficult thing, I would have to.
Well, the only thing I would add was in, um, my, if I knew how to print, um, the local, I don't know, again, but that's number twenty-four, so I was, was trying to see, so I would show you where the house would be in relation to all the other rooms. And it's so far down.
Yeah.
But a two hundred, um, and, and two hundred and seventy feet back, if they say, I would give more land, it means that it would, yeah, for that.
And maybe on much a smaller map, you actually draw how specifically what they're looking at, where the house is built.
The only question would be, what I want to be, I'm the buyer, I'm selling the land, because there's gonna be somebody who's done buy, the land, but they won't buy land, they can't build, because they're building my house, okay? Um, so, and I will, I'll probably keep it off the market immediately.
Yeah.
You know, it's been on the market for years, but I have, that, uh, that, so. Um, but, they might choose, but it don't let, I'm, I'm, you know, but I, I'm, although that, um, do check out for them, that's, that's their family, that's their steward, because they have to be, not downtown, be to the river, and they have to be back, and she knows where the store goes, so I can pump that out, um, but that would be the, the box.
Alright, you, did you get something together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yes, right, and thank you, thank you, glad you missed me.
And, and, do I, okay? Would I need to be pumped to you for this, or would you be able to pump to me by another office?
Okay.
Alright, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so next, under new business, ordinance work. Um, something that has come up, um, at the last meeting, just in discussion, I mean, say more, we needed more ordinance stuff a little bit in order to be, so. Um, so, we, we don't need, I'm not prepared to discuss exactly what we're looking for, but we need to put it on our agenda.
More ordinance.
More ordinance, yeah, you can tell.
In terms of how far out of the, of the, of the properties.
We can just make it a little bit more experienced, and then.
Somewhere.
It is, it is.
I don't think, they, it's maybe, whether it's a hundred feet or.
Our money is extremely good.
I, I, two hundred feet, uh, too square, like, come in, and, and. If your property line does this, it still goes straight up, like, uh, the, uh. But, uh, teenagers approach, and that might work.
Yeah, so we need to look at it, and, a little bit, the, the ordinance.
Possibly regularly to switch, uh, vessel. Yeah, someone tomorrow, they're approaching, or, or the law, or the, the, uh, so. Thing is, you've got a ninety-four block, thirty-four boat, uh, which way the wind blows, you can approach heavy this side.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that's something that we need to, and maybe we just have a workshop or something like that, where we said, go through, make a list of what we're looking for, to be incorporated in the ordinances, and then we send it over, go to some, to, to. It doesn't have a four, so, so, um, I'll, 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 I'll. And then, um, the second one, ordinance, um, is storefronts. We do not have an ordinance on storefronts. And currently, we have, um, a business wanting to lease a residential property here in Ranger, very well comprised of residential. And we have nothing in our ordinances to regulate any of that. So, that is something that I would need to work on, and quite frankly, I would like to make a recommendation to the board, to, to put a more, a, 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 for a year, and so, have an order. I guess, for us, in order to make time, to put something together.
The one thing we found that could fight this, was, you fight that real person. Where, if you live in the outside, sort of, just, I can't see, yeah, fight that real person, but, yeah. But, you thought, you said, can I understand all this, not, not all of that?
Yeah.
That's a big, a lot, she's coming from, or, but, but, but.
I think where we don't have anything in place, um, to regulate any of that, so more portable, ask the board, let them put more, more on it. So we can actually work on how, if, if, just, figure it out, because.
We can take it here.
We can change more than any time, yeah, the board, I can go back if I would, yeah. We might be able to build it on in November.
Okay, so the year is, we have to be on, on.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm not sure that outside is coming across this project, I think, for example, the ordinance isn't.
But then you, a little guy, actually, part of the application, that, or.
So, how, or, or, this one, you got the case, you, I don't know. I've got some paperwork on my desk, but I'm not gonna do anything, I'm, I'm doing right applications.
Yeah, well, that, the, of course, for more, more, of, 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 arguments, of, 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 yeah. I think they have, uh, the, uh, question, six months, actually, ask for more, or, extended in six months, if you have to. Could do either.
They did, yeah, for the. Who doesn't want to?
Um, that was, that was six months, I guess.
Oh, I'm out of eighty, yeah, eight, either way. We might have it done in six months. Yeah. So, and if we don't, then we can, we can, yeah. We're doing, we, we wouldn't. Yeah.
Oh, there's, you were, uh.
Yeah. So where else would I actually?
Yeah, and there, we've also, uh, that, that, we weren't.
No, well, we know it was, yeah.
Yeah. Well, you made a motion, my side.
But I can't, I don't want you. Okay. Always a favor. Um, thirdly, the land use table. Um, there are several things in the land use table that are unclear, return to the, uh. Uh, three, uh, thirty-eight twenty? Oh, right. So, there's actually simple things, but, but looking over the, um, the solar farms, other things, this is not fair, utilities or essential services, those, like, uh, this, right here. Um, talking to the person who's filling out, uh, filling in for the code of personnel. The intent of this was more for, I guess, like subdivisions, you're not a subdivision, not authority, all of them, they're solar farms. So just putting maybe a little bit of clarity into, um, the land use track. One of the other things, of the ability of, 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 yes, yes. So that one is. Commercial facilities requiring true renovation, it says that, you do not. Alright. Um, but, that's, for a commercial, this is, huh?
Without a show, right.
The solar farm?
Yeah.
No. But this is one of the things we found, with all the different stuff that needs to be, needs to be corrected, updated. Um, so that's one of the things that we needed to put on, that we can do, um, a workshop. Just kind of, hammer out what we're looking for as a planning board, and then getting, voting to send it over to the board.
I'm looking to do, uh, essential.
Yes.
Couldn't you just clear that, when it's, uh?
Yes. Absolutely. Um, and wasn't there one more ordinance that you were looking at?
My, uh.
Well, I don't know. But, the board.
Yeah, wants to have a workshop, discuss, going to those essential services.
Yeah. You go with that?
Right.
I'm going to vacation June sixth.
Oh, Lord.
So I.
I'm not going.
Um, so, maybe discussing it after that?
Yeah.
I can just leave you on the agenda, if you're trying to familiarize yourself with, um, and we can print some stuff off. You guys find something that you're, think of you.
For the solar farm?
Sir, not just that, solar farm, the land use table, right? Um. Whatever you bring, we'll have to make sure, make sure your promise, that, 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 uh, I'll.
What do you think of the third one?
No. Alright. Okay, does anybody have anything else? No?
Why are we, concerned, I think I mentioned earlier, it's like, I, I hear almost feeling concerns about.
Oh, I have an update for that. Oh, yeah, we do have an update for that. So, the Board of Wexler, the Board of Wexler voted Monday, um, to the board with a stop work order, and a notice of violation. So, um, Tracy is working with the town, trying to get that put together, and get that delivered.
Yeah.
But you know, my, my goal, but I give up. Yeah, so that is. What if something just go down?
Is that something I can, Phil, speak on? Or if somebody else can, I can say.
Yeah, it was long in a fellow meeting, so, yeah. And, so, I had requested that she, a couple weeks ago, I requested that she would have seen, you know, she was, you know, and then I heard us, and again, well, we might, I'm, I'm there, out, because she's supposed to get one, and she, um. So, so, it just, it, I feel, all the, all the, uh.
I see the six, twice, every week.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm sure a lot of them, all of them, yeah.
Okay, but you just looked at, I got your robe, one of the six on the left, just a, so.
Yeah. Stop, even in, yeah.
Right.
And then, she's been doing this, uh, for a year, that, that, right.
It shouldn't have gone this far.
No, absolutely should not have. So, yeah, it's just a, in the way of, 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 in the, in the, um, long, to figure out what's best for me.
But, I don't know, or, or, it is enough, that we got a law.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I should, there's enough in here to go on. It's clearly, uh, this. Yeah. It was important, it's, it's, it's now, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah. Because I do have one question that, like, for our, earlier. Well, Kevin, we voted that Kevin, we're only allowed to take ten passengers, and himself out from his property. But the original CUP said you could have ten passengers total. That one is working out of the loss. At some point, that became twenty-nine passengers. And I'm not sure when that was voted on, or if there was a big CUP.
It was not voted on.
Okay. So is that a violation of the original CUP?
It was, we voted that we, use that, oh, so all they have is ten passengers.
Just from the start.
From the start. Yeah.
But, but it wasn't clear on, so, laws is wrong.
Yeah, right now, we have someone in the, uh.
But I think some of them just have, more clear.
Neighbors do not have it. But it's definitely a deal, it's a lot of, like, happen.
Yeah, not remember the houseboats, he probably would never have had an issue with his furball. We only have a problem with furball until the houseboats come.
But that's why we need to clarify our, our, so that it's, uh. I mean, we told you, so you told us. Maybe it's better to go. Yeah, it is.
Yeah, the intensity of those boats, it's, 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 you know, but, well, because, uh, water, it's, uh, the, 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 most, most, uh.
Yes, come.
She want to go, she.
Alright, um, I think both things to, uh, Jerry, the name has six, very, uh, six.
Sorry.
How was it there?